Okay, I'd like to call the Facilities Management and Transportation Meeting to order. Mr. Lally, do we have any public comments? We don't have Drew here, so I assume there's no public comments?
There's no public comment. Good evening, everyone. The first item on tonight's agenda is the CMS soil issue. So, the board may recall that we were having an issue with some remaining soil fill from the actual construction of the new middle school. And there was the potential for an add alternate in the beginning of the project that we did not accept. And so, we were then looking at, because of the vanadium issue that we spoke about throughout, that there was going to be the possibility that we would have a pretty large exposure in this to possibly half a million dollars to remove the soil. So, I finally get to give you guys good news. I want to thank Dewey Engineering. I want to thank KCBA, Penn Builders, Plymouth Township, Karen Weiss, and her team. We were able to help them on their project and get our soil over to the township. And we will basically not have any extra exposure to our contract. So, that's really good news for all of us. And again, it was a team effort by, again, I know Mr. Kiefer's in the audience tonight, but Mr. Hamley and Mr. Lynch, they did stay at this to make sure that our exposure was as minimal as possible. And then, working together with the township, we were able to figure something out that helped everybody. So, that's a great way to end something that didn't look so good, right? So, I figured I'd start with a little bit of good news.
Yeah, for a change, Mr. Lally.
For a change.
Very, very much.
Change, change. So, now, I'm going to adapt back to kind of the...
The bad news.
If there's no questions for that, then I'll kind of jump into the second item, which isn't necessarily good news. If you recall, we talked about the load bank and the issues we were having with the emergency generator. And Mr. Zablowski and I were working with the OSEP to see if there's a possibility that they would cover the fact that we need a load bank for the building. And unfortunately, they denied that claim that they would cover it. It's based on the fact that there's no real mistake or blame that they can find on anyone that why it's not covered. So, you know, basically, what would happen if we could say, well, it was faulty craftsmanship by the electrician, or it was installed wrong, then we would have some coverage, and we would have a claim that would have actually went through. But because we're all experiencing this for the first time, we can't really say who's at fault. Now, they did tell us that when we first tested the emergency generator, we did lose a decent amount of light fixtures burned out because of we had an electrical problem. And there was some labor that went into that. So, they did tell us that we can put a separate claim in for that. So, we're working on getting that together, that they do believe that that would be covered. So, we'll get some money back, but the reality is, the load bank, like we spoke in the past about, is it's ordered, and we're moving forward with it. And we're going to put another claim in the OSEP for, actually, we're going to add into that the rental for the load bank that we're using now. So, and we'll see where that one goes. So, that's just an update. It's nothing new or nothing changed, other than they said no. And we're now moving in a different direction, just to see if we can get any of those, recoup any of those funds.
Hey, Joe, excuse me. What, can you remind me again, how much was it? How much is the load bank?
The load bank change order altogether, I believe, was around $153 for everything. $153,000 was the change order for the load bank.
Do you know how much in damages that we had that we're going to submit a new claim for?
So, yeah, that's what we're working on, Gal. We're trying to get all that information together. We're counting the light fixtures that had to be replaced, the man-hours that went into it. And then, we're actually then going to put together the piece. We were doing it two different ways. We're looking at the, they may only look at the rental piece until like the time we make the claim. They might not give it to us the whole way out. But we're going to give it to them projected the whole date until we receive the new one. Worst they can say is no. So, we'll try.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So, that was the second item on the agenda. See how quick we're going, guys? See that? I mean, Gal don't even get her jacket off. I'm on item three, Gal. I'm moving, Gal. So, if there's no more questions on the load bank? I know, it's confusing, so don't ask any of that. The next item on the agenda is the CMS audio and visual update. So, Jim Kiefer from KCBA has a little presentation he would like to present.
Good evening, everyone. Good to see you again. We wanted to give you an update on the AV system because it's not all complete yet. I'm sure it's been discussed in the district, and we just wanted to give you all the facts of what's going on and what we're doing. We're talking really about three spaces. It's the gym, the cafeteria, and the auditorium that have specialty sound and video systems in them. I'll go through them one at a time. Go next. Just want to start with, you know, hey, we occupied the building in February. What's going on? Why isn't this complete? This is a real-world example of what's going on in the industry with supply chain. The specialized electronics with the microchips and the processors, we're seeing crazy, extreme wait times to get that equipment. And so, this AV equipment really falls in that category. There's many, many dozens of pieces of equipment that go into these systems. And we might have nine out of 10 pieces, but that 10th piece that has the chip in it, they don't have it. And without those key pieces, the system doesn't work. We kind of need the whole thing, put it all together, and make it work. They've probably installed 90% of the equipment, but we don't have that last 10% to really finish it off and make them function. And you're not alone in this regard. There, we're seeing this across a lot of our projects that have auditoriums and specialty sound systems. Everybody's seeing the same shortages. So, this isn't unique to you. This isn't unique to this contractor. This is happening everywhere. Just real quick, who's involved here? This is a traditional triangle of construction. The district, the owner's at the top. You have a contract with KCBA to design the building. And you have a contract with WGE, that's Wing Gap Electric, to do the electrical design. There's other players involved here. On my side of the table, I have a contract with Schuh Consulting. They are the theatrical consultant. They designed all the systems in the auditorium. And Snyder Hoffman designed the systems in the cafeteria and the gym. They're the experts in designing those systems. And then, on the contractor's end, Wing Gap does some of the install, but they contract out a lot of it to a specialty contractor that does their installation and purchasing of that equipment. So, there's a lot of different players all working here. And Dewey Engineering is also in this bubble as well. They work directly for the district to help administer the contract. So, all the people in all these entities have been working on this for years now, trying to get this equipment installed. Little bit of the history. Our team, our design team, and our consultants met with the administrators and the teachers during design many times to really dial in exactly what equipment you needed, what was right for that space. And then, they specified that equipment. So, Snyder Hoffman and Peter Schuh selected the equipment, and that's what was in the bid documents. Those products then come back to us once the contractor has a job, and they make a submittal of the products. We approved those project products in October of 2020 and December of 2020. So, two years ago, the products were approved. I asked for a firm date of when they ordered the equipment. The Creston products are the products that were really causing the problems here. And they ordered those in August of 2021. So, we're 15 months, and we still don't have the parts from that order. So, that's kind of the history of where we're at. The gymnasium, start with sort of the better news here. Not all the systems are, you know, not functioning. A lot of them do function. So, in the gym, the sound system is pretty much complete. They installed the wireless microphones last week. And we had a temporary amplifier in there to make the system work. They've now put in the permanent amplifier. So, that system is pretty much finished. But I highlighted in red here, there's still some things we're waiting on. The local TV hookup, there's a platform in the bleachers, the video, a game. And there's electronics in there to have the local cable company plug in outside their cable truck and broadcast the game. That video component is not finished, so that does not function.
So, that would be like us using our CITV truck to plug in if we wanted to televise a game?
So, the room works, the sound system works, but you can't broadcast out yet. So, that's a feature that's still coming. And we need to do the final inspection of that equipment and training. I think one of the key things here is make sure that the contractors get the training scheduled and completed with the owner, all the users that are going to have to use the system. The cafeteria, very similar. The sound system is installed and operational. They just put in some wireless microphones last week. The microphones were one of the issues that we were really struggling with. And a lot of those components recently went in. The picture on the bottom is the brains. That's the actual sound system that's in the faculty lounge. Here, again, we got to do the training and the final inspection. Next is the auditorium. So, there's multiple systems in the auditorium. First is the theatrical lighting. The lighting system is complete. The panel, the control panel is on the desk in the room, and all the lights can be controlled. So, that system's finished. We're just need to get that inspected, and training needs to happen so that the drama club and whoever needs to use the theatrical lighting knows how to use it. The audio, I'm sorry, the video system. So, in the back of the room, there's a large projector that's installed. It does operate on a limited basis. It can work from the podium, but it can't work from the desk because we don't have all the parts in place yet. We're really waiting on the final Creston amplifier to finish that system off. And there's another specialty feature with the video in the auditorium. It's designed so that the feed, the video feed from the room can be broadcast to the music rooms, so that the music rooms can be used as green rooms. That video functionality is not finished yet. We cannot do that at the moment. And the sound system. This is where there's been a lot of struggle over the last month. It's been operational on a limited scope. Some of the microphones are in and work. The sound control is at the desk, and the stage podium is installed. Just this week, they were installing some of the other microphones around the room. Where we're really lacking functionality is the panels and mic jacks, the front of the stage and the back of the room. We don't have those panels. So, those connection points are not all there. They've been working on the wireless microphones and the hip packs. So, those, the hip packs are in hand, but they still haven't finished installing those and getting that all working. So, I think this is probably the area of greatest frustration is the sound amplification system in the auditorium works partially, but not fully. The picture in the lower corner there is, the new podium's up on the stage, but not everything works. So, they were, you can't plug in right there because there's nowhere to plug in. So, they were running a cord across the stage to a temporary desk out front. So, that's sort of the update on that. And what have we been doing? Well, the contractors did install some temporary equipment over the last few months to get some functionality. Some temporary amplifiers were put in. Those are being replaced now with the permanent ones. We also looked at alternative products. You know, of course, that's one of the first things that come up is, well, what else can we put in there? Is there something else that's easily available? The reality is, is across the industry, the timelines on equipment is very long. And these systems are very particular. It's not that simple that we can just go, oh, we'll grab this piece and plug it in, and it'll work. A 10-year-old controller or whatever, it's probably not going to be compatible with the other stuff that we already have installed here. So, that's one of the challenges. We meet and talk about this weekly. We've had a construction meeting since the school opened. So, at least the last six months, there's a weekly meeting, and this issue is discussed every week. The theater consultant, I just scheduled it today. He's coming out at the end of the month, on the 28th. Be here all day to inspect and do a punch list on the systems. So, we're hoping to have almost everything finished by then, have it punched out. And tied to that is, then we get the training done on the systems. And last point here is, there's still money that we have not authorized payment on for the electrical contract. There's $272,000 that we are not paying them until the work is complete. So, this isn't like you're out the money, you know? Once they get the work finished and it's acceptable, then we talk about paying them for it. That's a basic update. I'm here if there's any questions about the systems.
So, there's no extra cost to us for any of this? Any of the temporary equipment? Nothing?
No, there's been no discussion of additional costs. You know, certainly, it's not been in the best interest for the electrician to be out there this long and working. I mean, they're not being efficient. But, and they've worked with us to get what we could temporarily to keep it working. It's just, it's not all working, and it's been a long time, and everybody's getting a little...
So, other than the not being able to get CITV to hook up, the biggest issue is the auditorium sound?
I think that's the biggest issue. The other two rooms are pretty much complete. I think there needs to be a good discussion with the drama teacher and the music teachers about what performances you want to have in those rooms. And there is capability to do performances in there. It's just you don't have everything available yet. The lighting system works, the sound system works. It doesn't work everywhere. It's not, you know, your full functionality's not there. And, you know, it's going to be, is this an acceptable level to put on the performance or not? I can't answer that question because it really deals with exactly how they want to do a performance.
Yeah, if I can interrupt for just one second, I apologize, Gal. I know it looks like you're waiting. But one of the things, I believe Mr. Cahill in the back there today started meeting with the teachers about their presentations. And he works for Colonial, obviously. And he is beginning that process of, what do you need? What can we get to actually do our performances and things up to where the teachers would like to see it happen? So, we've already started that internally to see what needs to happen. So, I just wanted to make sure we're already moving in that direction.
And I know there's a performance that I've seen scheduled for the middle school, but I didn't notice when.
I believe December 13th was the first thing we saw on there. Somewhere around that area, the second week in December.
All right. So, my question was about the training, just a little bit understanding the strategy. Because I saw on several slides, training is needed, training is needed. So, is the strategy that the training would happen all at once per, like, per space? So that you're not having, like, having to...
Probably not all at once. We might do the cafeteria and the gym systems at the same time because they're similar. The auditorium is unique.
Right. That's what I meant. I'm sorry, by space, by each of the different spaces.
So, on the 28th, our consultant asked that the various contractors are there that installed the equipment. So, he makes sure they put in everything right. And then, it makes sense to me that we would have an auditorium training where we go over the lighting system and the sound system and the video system all together because they do work together. There's different boards for each, but to put on a production, you kind of need to know it all. So, I think it's, we're at the point where the district will define who's in that group of stakeholders that needs to be trained, and then we get it scheduled.
We have the group, Gal. I just, personally, I think what has to happen, and I'll be pushing on for our end, is there needs to be training now that says, this is how the systems function as of the end of the month. And then, there needs to be maybe a refresher when everything's back in, and now, we're operating at 100%.
You're reading my mind. I was going, the reason I was asking the question was because we're using, we're using what is there. And if we're not trained on it, we could damage, the equipment could be damaged. So, that was the reason for my question. And then, I had a follow-up in regards to alternatives for the auditorium. So, I know you mentioned, again, I don't know audiovisual at all. So, I know you mentioned it's hard to kind of connect old and new equipment together, but are there other alternatives that, and I don't know how much of a big lift this is, but to use all older equipment if they need, like, so if this is not done and fixed by December 13th, how much of a hindrance is it going to be? We've all sat in these, you know, sessions. We want the kids to have a good experience. So, is it possible to kind of just put the old in so that they can have a good performance while we're waiting for the new stuff?
So, we thought, I mean, in speaking with Dr. Christian and Mr. Bogley, and we did have Mr. Cahill involved, we, that's where we thought we were going to meet with everyone and find out exactly what we need and make sure we have what we need so that the performance isn't, that the kids and nobody is cheated through the process. So, that is our goal right now that we're trying to do internally. And at that point, I can't promise anyone that, but I'm sure Dr. Christian and I will have a conversation, what that cost is to us, and if we can recoup some of that money. But they will, we will be running to make sure that what the students need or deserve to have, they will have.
Thank you, Joe.
You're welcome.
Would you say it's accurate that they would theoretically be able to have their performances and the musical today, and use the sound system for that? But aesthetically, there might be mic cables running across the floor or things like that to get to the boxes that work?
I would love to tell you. I absolutely know that answer, but that really is slightly out of where my discipline is. But I'm going to tell you, yeah, you're on the same page we are. We're doing what we can do to make it work, obviously, stay safe, and make the performances, you know, as best as possible for the students and for the staff that are going to perform.
And then, the third quarter 2023 for the Creston amplifier?
Yeah, you saw that.
Is that a, so, basically, this, just like with the fields where they're not going to be ready this year. They're like, all right, next year, the theater, they get their, they get actual lights and AV. Is that a set, that's when it's coming in? Is that a, that's when the manufacturer's telling us? And is that a...
That's what they've told us.
So, that's a great question because we're on, I think, gate three or four at this point. So, in our meeting last week, we, Mr. Bogley and I, representing the district and Mr. Cahill, we made sure that we said, look, we want all the work that can possibly be done, done. We don't want to hear now that the piece has landed, and we need a month to put it in. Everything should be done to that point that we're just terminating wires or terminating to a fixture, and now, we're saying, hey, here's how you operate it. So, we're trying to make it as close to plug and play as possible. There'll be some work, but we made that clear. There's minutes of that meeting, and that, you know, that's what we're expecting.
And once it comes in, they'll still have to get inspected, and then, we'll still schedule training, I assume? So?
Yes.
Yeah, in all likelihood, there's going to be multiple training sessions just because we need to get everybody up to speed on how it works now. And then, when everything's finished, come back and do it again.
Okay. Anyone have any other questions? I'm sorry, Mr. Winchester. I know you're late. Can I, I can answer any questions if you have them later.
I had one AV-adjacent question. The one-button studio in the library, that space is still being used for storage right now? Do we know when that's going to get installed?
Yeah. I apologize. I should not be smiling when I hear it. I just saw an email the other day that went back and forth. And it was supposed to be a one-button studio. I have to talk to Mr. Bogley. I honestly don't know where that on the technology side didn't become one. So, I will get together with Drew, and I'll get you an answer on that. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kiefer. The next item on the agenda is just a very brief update about the dugouts for the girls' softball team have started on, to the left of Victory Fields, or if you will, I guess, the north side. So, that's exciting to see that project underway. It is a tight timeframe, but we did make a slight alteration. I'll try and get a rendering for the board. But there was some block that was selected for the dugouts. And then, I worked with KCBA and Mr. Kiefer, and we actually found the stone that is a really close match to the boys' dugouts. So, the color scheme should be pretty close to the same, which we thought would be really nice. And so, again, we're moving along there, trying to take advantage of all the nice weather we can get. Let's hope Mother Nature cooperates, and we keep temperatures a little bit warm and keep wet weather away. And hopefully, we can make a lot of progress in the next couple of weeks, and hopefully, maybe even a week or two in December, and then, we'll be ready for spring.
This is the one that our target is March 1st?
Yes, correct. Yeah, I believe, Gal, the first day of spring sports is around March 8th or something. So, we're like the week prior, we tried to have the field ready. Okay. Any other questions on the dugout? Okay. Last item on the agenda this evening is just Mr. Zablowski and a transportation update.
Yes, thank you, Joe. We got our weekly report from First Student. We have 68 bus runs, and as of the report on Friday, we have 68 bus drivers. Problem with that is, there's no subs. So, we're still looking for subs. We feel a comfortable level is three to five subs because they're shared between our district and Norristown's district. So, they do have several drivers that have applied for their permit. They have several that are behind the wheel and never guarantees because they still have to take the test. And then, but they are getting a lot of van drivers. Talked to a lot of transportation contractors, and they're trying to entice people to come in with the vans, get them trained on the vans, and then, sort of dangle a bonus in front of them for them to go to their CDL. So, there is some method to their madness. But we've been seeing a lot less late buses, the drivers showing up for work. We did, we were able to acquire an internal driver to replace the driver that resigned right before school started. So, we have three full-time drivers within the district. You'll be approving the new one next week, and we hope to start, have them start shortly thereafter. And an update, we met with First Student last week. They have approached us about possibly extending their contract. A lot of the transportation providers are doing this now, just to give them some kind of security, some longevity. So, we are entertaining their options. We're costing it out right now. It's the first meeting of many. This contract is scheduled to end June of 2024. That's the update for transportation.
And if there's no questions, that, this is more, I'm sorry?
Sorry, but can you tell me what the giant hole is at Plymouth Elementary? Is that the sewage system again?
Oh, you mean in the, in the front of the building?
Yes.
So, we believe it's a broken pipe.
Really deep hole.
Yeah. So, it was cambered. So, we actually have a price in the contract on board to make the repair.
And is that in the sewer or in the water?
It's, it's in, it is in the waste system, yes. Stay away from that word, sewer. But yes, it is. Yes, it is.
I assume it's on us because it's on our property?
Yes.
Okay.
It's not astronomical, believe it or not, the repair. The dig's not that bad. It's just it's a broken pipe. We cambered it, and that's what we saw.
Yeah, I mean, I watched it going all weekend, so I was just curious.
While we were trying to, I tried my best. I brought Chris LaShiavo out from Plymouth, and I was trying to see if I could attach it to the roadwork and what was going on across the street, but I lucked out.
Nice try.
I didn't do too well.
Nice try. Thank you.
My question was back to the transportation item in terms of the, we have 68. At what point did we have a one-to-one situation? So, we have 68 bus routes and 68 drivers. And I'm asking that question because just in my community alone, our elementary students are getting dropped off at near, almost... are getting dropped off at near almost 5 o'clock. That's late. And the school is literally right around the corner. So just curious as to when that occurred. And parents are not happy. And they know that I'm a board member, so they keep asking me.
Right.
So just, just curious. I don't know what to tell them.
We're not happy about it either because we have to handle those phone calls also. So if a bus driver calls out and there's no subs, that means another bus driver has to do a double run. So in the morning, that means picking up the kids, dropping them off at school, going back and doing the other run and picking them up. We try not to, you know, it's usually not the same run, but the kids are missing some instructional time. So we have offered to the parents that if they could bring the kids to school, even if it's early, because we're sending out communications to them saying, bus number, you know, whatever is going to be late today because of a call out, we are offering that the, the, the parents can bring their kids to school before the door is officially open, and we will take those kids so that they can get to work. So we are trying to be giving them some options. Same thing happens in the afternoon. If a bus driver calls out in the afternoon, bus will come to school, pick up the kids, take them, drop them off, and then have to come back and pick up the kids. Now, there's not much we can do as far as the timing goes. We have agreed that the, the teachers will be compensated if they have to stay 15 minutes or half an hour longer than, than the normal bus duty. But it's just something that we have to deal with. And we, we apologize to the parents profusely that, that we have this situation. But in chatting with other school districts, I think we're doing pretty well compared, comparatively to other schools. There are schools that are actually just canceling the runs and say, get your kids here whenever you can and come and pick them up.
And at what, what point, specifically referring to like the afternoon, does communication go out to parents such that if, if, if you, if we know that there was a call out and we know that the bus route is going to be late prior to it leaving the school, do the parents have an opportunity to then come pick their kids up instead of waiting for the bus? Because they, what I'm hearing is like they're missing appointments, things of that nature, or they have other children that they have to get to a certain place. And so if they're sitting waiting for a bus that's supposed to come at 4:00 and it doesn't come until 5:00, they've now missed whatever it is that they had planned.
Correct. Well, we, we normally know in the afternoon if a, a bus driver calls out, we will find out between maybe 1:30 at the latest, 2:15. And, and that will then give us a chance to get a connected message out to that bus and let them know that their, their bus is going to be a little late because of driver absence and that they can come pick their, their students up if they would like. Makes it hard because, you know, most people, most people work till 3:00, 3:30, 4:00, and they can't do that. So we're struggling with it, and we, we realize it's a, a problem for us and the parents. And we're trying to let First Student, you know, feel that pain also to give them more motivation and get some more drivers in.
Sorry, Dave, do you mind, what was the number of routes we had pre-pandemic before we started asking parents to opt out?
About 83.
Okay, so we're about the same number of routes now that we had, I know we're down to 60, sorry.
Yeah, we were 83 prior to pandemic. Now we're down to 68. And, and that's still with a lot of parents helping us out by picking up and dropping off.
Conceivably next year, it'll probably start creeping back up.
We're keeping our fingers crossed.
I think Dave, I'm sorry I'm late, but I think Dave or Joe probably talked about what we're doing in the morning to help parents, but we've also extended to our faculty and our support staff that if families have delayed buses in the afternoon, need supervision, then we will provide it and pay for it. We, we can't offer it, you know, for everybody just because that would compete with Wonder Spring. But for those routes that are impacted, we definitely will take, make sure that we have appropriate supervision and especially, you know, we really want to help families where parents and guardians have hourly jobs. And so that's, that's their livelihood. So in the mornings, we have, it's available for all families for those buses are impacted. In the afternoons, for those faculty who stay late beyond their contracted day, we take care of them too. And CEA and CESB has been great with helping us with that. And the administrators too, they'll, you know, everybody pitches in.
Okay, if there's no further questions, that's actually the last item on the FMT agenda this evening.
Okay. Any questions or comments? We have anything? Emails? Okay, meeting adjourned. We'll move right on to HR. Beth?
I would like to call this meeting of the HR committee to order. Do we have any public comment on the agenda? All right, then I will turn it over. We have policies for deletion and for review on tonight's agenda.
Thank you, Mrs. Petruno. First item of business this evening is policy deletion of policy 309.1, certification of the middle school. This policy has been determined by PSBA as language not considered a policy and better suited as an internal process and/or a handbook instead. Questions about item A? Item B is policy review of policy number 317 regarding conduct of discipline, disciplinary procedures. This particular policy speaks to all employees of the district, administrative, professional, classified, and, and an expectation of all employees to conduct themselves in a matter that is appropriate, professional, and orderly in their behavior. When needed, of course, progressive discipline is applied throughout the employment of employees with the exception of egregious or illegal behaviors, of course, which would cause us to take more extreme disciplinary action and/or dismissal. All educators also are required to comply with the PA standard code of conduct, and all unionized employees of the district are also required to abide by the legally binding collective bargaining agreement of their particular group. Are there questions regarding policy number 317? This is a new policy that's been recommended to us to implement from PSBA.
And that's because before it was just, it was kind of like a handbook policy versus a district policy?
It's a legal liability that coincides with the professional educator's code of conduct under PDE. So all districts are required to have a policy that mirrors what is anybody who works in a public school has to follow the professional code of conduct. So this gets into a little more depth, but we can make that code of conduct available on the board as well.
And the last policy that we are requesting be implemented also from PSBA, which is a, a legal requirement, is regarding, it's policy number 317.1, and that is educator misconduct. And this board's policy is to promote integrity of the education profession and create a climate within the district that fosters ethical conduct and practice. This particular policy governs only employees who are certificated within the district. So that includes our teachers, our administrators, superintendent, our school psychologist, certified school nurses, anyone who holds a PDE certificate. Again, these employees are mandated, I'm sorry, all employees of the district are considered mandated reporters as well and required to complete that recertification of being a mandated reporter every five years per PDE. Superintendent or designee is required to report any disciplinary or dismissals to PDE within 15 days of notice of discovery should there be any sexual abuse or exploitation that comes to our attention.
Michelle, I have a general question about the, specifically about the last two policies. So these two policies, we're, you're asking, we're going to be voting on these next week?
No.
No?
So it's the practice of the district that board policies require two readings. So next week's policy that will appear on the public agenda will be, simply be for public view, and any questions or opportunities for the board to make any recommendations for changes in language they would like to have happen. And then it will appear again in the January's public meeting since we don't have a December meeting other than the reorg meeting. And at that point in time, any corrections or changes will have been made, and the final draft will appear for, or vote at that time.
At that time. Okay. And then after the vote, how do we typically review these policies with staff? And I guess because, because these are specific to the staff, do they have to sign off? Wanted to say that they read and understand these policies?
We have at the beginning of every school year, Mrs. O'Reilly's office gives the principals a list of policies, including these that we just mentioned, to go through with our staff. And all staff sign off that they attended that meeting. So if, if we have a violation of those policies, when we have to meet with an employee, we can go through and say, were you in attendance at the meeting where this policy was reviewed? Yes, I was. Do you understand the infraction? And then we go through that. So while we've already gone through this particular one, in spirit, it will be reinforced at the next available faculty meeting. We'll probably do it in between the first and second read so that our employees know that it's up for approval, so that there's no, and then we'll meet with, I meet with CEA, and Michelle meets with CESB monthly, and we'll make sure that they're aware that the board acted on them.
But, thank you.
Quick question. You said certify, anyone who's got a cer- certification, does that include aides with certification, or are they left out of this because they don't have to be certificated?
That's a great question. So the certified instructional aides that we hire for the district are hired with the, with the understanding that they can be placed in a classroom to function as a classroom teacher.
I just want to make sure that this policy.
Governs them as well.
Governs them as well, and that that's okay with CESP because we do have aides who are not certified.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah. And it will, it will govern those instructional aides.
Are all board members familiar with the concept of mandated reporters? So mandated reporter became, it's been in place for a long time, but it certainly has been brought to light in the past decade. Anytime that an educator is, receives information that a student under the age of 18 has been potentially exposed to any type of grooming behavior or, or receive, sexual misconduct by an adult, whether it be a communication, a physical act, suggestion, anything, you are mandated to report it to Children and Youth Protective Services. If the educator, there was a, there was a case in the northern part of Montgomery County about seven, eight years ago, where a student came back from college who was 20 years old, but said when, when she was 17, she had experienced sexual harassment. And that teacher, she shared it with a teacher during like an alumni event. That teacher didn't report it. That teacher was held accountable because it was still within the statute of limitations. It should have been reported. So anytime, and we take great care in explaining this to all staff members, they need to report it to an administrator right away. If the entity, meaning Colonial School District, reports it to CYS, that then protects the administrator, the teacher, whomever observed or received the information. But as, even as board members, if you become aware of something, or even if it's a rumor, you need to contact me, contact Michelle right away, we always err on the side of caution and, and over-report to Protective Services.
Dr. Christian, you talked about sexual abuse and things. Doesn't also include physical abuse?
It does.
So any kind of abuse or endangerment of a child?
Correct.
Okay.
What CYS will do with it, Children and Youth Services or any child protective agency, they will triage it, prioritize it versus other cases they have because they serve the entire county. And then they will either contact local police or, or local authorities or, or county detectives, and then they'll contact us and tell us what they're going to do with the process. The key is to over-communicate. They would rather, in fact, my first year here, and I won't go into detail, Sue is aware of this, I received a letter about a teacher from 30 years ago, 30 to 40 years ago.
Seventies, early seventies.
Early seventies. And the student at, who was obviously now significantly older, had some very drastic complaints about a teacher who had, I didn't know at the time, was deceased. But before I called Sue, I called CYS because what I read in the letter was alarming. And so I called, called the police and said, I'm not sure if there's anything you can do with this, but that's like, it's ingrained in all of our administrators. You, you cannot, you must over-communicate with the authorities. Even if the case is closed, at least at a minimum, it's been investigated. So when you hear the term mandated reporters, it holds great weight with all of our staff members.
Is physical abuse covered in a different policy? It's not this one? Because it looks like from the definitions, this one's just sexual abuse?
We have a harassment policy, so it probably is in there, but I will have to double-check. But if not, that would be, that would be a perfect example of between first and second read. If we want to add something to it, we certainly can. That's the purpose of being so deliberate. And we, so we don't just hand the board policies and say approve them next week. So we'll go back. Michelle, if you would go back and double-check where that's covered. If it's not in the harassment policy, then we need to get it in this policy.
Does the harassment policy, I guess, Michelle, maybe check and make sure that also has the mandated reporting in it?
Okay.
If they're going to be in two separate policies?
Okay. Absolutely. I'll be happy to do that.
Okay, so then we will move these on to first read for our meeting on November 17th. Thank you. Any other comments from the board? Any public comments?
I just, I think we're up to about, in the past two years, we're up to about 70 or 75 policies that the boards reviewed. So we finished the 100s, the 200s. Michelle will go through the 300s, and then we get to the exciting and riveting six sevens and eights, which are about property finance and all, all other types of things. One last thing, I know it's obviously been in the news recently. We do have a, a board policy on political activity as it relates to our staff. And so we review that with CEA, CESP. They certainly understand while our employees have every right outside of school hours to work the polls, express their First Amendment rights during the school day, we are quote-unquote Switzerland. We do not express a political view. We don't hang banners. We don't tell kids who we're voting for. And our, all of our associations certainly understand the impact of that. And so that's something we review with our staff on an annual basis. But we know it's been dominating the news recently, but the board has very specific policy related to that.
I have a question about that. Not necessarily around encouraging and discussing, soliciting your views, but do we encourage our students, our high school students who are voting, eligible to vote, to vote?
We do. I was actually talking with several superintendents about that as far as what different districts do to make registration available to students. So we're going to, I'm going to visit with Dr. Bacconi about that so that they're aware. And in our social studies classes, we have a government class. We have multiple levels of the government class. So just about by junior year, every student's gone, had, had the ability to take that course. We talk about the importance of voting. We don't express which way to vote. We express all sides. Kids do mock debates. They present, you know, a variety of, you know, whatever their affiliation may be, they present all sides as part of understanding the process. And so I think our staff does a very good job with that. But the ability to vote, it's really mixed about where schools ask how much information they present to students about registering. So I'm going to, I brought it up. I actually have a meeting tomorrow at Upper Dublin with all the superintendents, and that's on the agenda.
Yeah, we had a resident send a letter, an email about that subject.
Oh, okay. Sorry, I must have missed that.
No, no, no. He sent it to me because he knows me.
Okay.
And I told him that it would be. And I told him that it would be discussed, and I just responded to him that Dr. Pecani said, student groups solicit people to register to vote, but that we don't have an actual event, or policy, or plan in the high school to get everybody to vote.
Some districts do, some are very specific, some are more general.
So that's something that I asked Dr. Christian to look into.
Okay, okay. And I'm asking because as part of the, the community, we did some things with some of the students, our kids, our own kids, if we, and they produced some videos, and I just think making it fun for them.
Sure.
Because they seem, like my daughter originally thought voting was something, you know, that only adults do, right? Not considering you're 18, you are an adult. But, so we did like a TikTok is the thing. So we did a TikTok video and had some of the students participate in the video, so that their friends could see it and more encourage them to vote.
Okay. Anything else? All right. Then we will adjourn this meeting and move on to finance. Thank you.
All right. We'll get started with our finance. Call this meeting in order. Is there any public comment? No, I guess not. Dave?
Okay.
Our first item on the agenda is the budget update through October. So this is included in your packet. All right. So you can see that the revenue from last year was about 73% of, of budget. This year, we're at 70, almost 71% of budget. So the big difference is in the area of local tax revenue. Last year, we had a very big settlement of a, of an old delinquent tax bill, or several, to the tune of about $2 million. That has not hit this year. The assessments are ongoing, but we haven't really gotten to fruition yet where we're receiving any money. So we're hoping that that, that catches up. But as of right now, we're a little bit behind as far as revenue goes, especially in the local area. On the expenditure side, you can see that the last year through October, we spent 23% of the budget. This year is only 21.41. The big difference is that last year in October, we had three pays. And then this normally happens because we pay on a bi-weekly basis, and this report is prepared on a cash basis. But there were only two pays this October. Now, we won't catch up, and I think in my, my verbiage here, I explained it, but we won't catch up. Normally, it's the next month we'll catch up, but actually, the three-pay occurrence is going to happen in December. And I think that's a function of the fact we, we had that one, that extra week delay at the beginning of the school year, so it pushed everything back. So we won't see the expenses even out until we publish the December report. But, you know, looking at those two things, so expenditures are down because of wages and benefits, and revenue's down because of that $2 million delinquency. But if you look at our excess revenue over expenditures, last year, we were at 49.78, this year at 49.44. So it balanced out that we have less expenses and, and less revenue, and we're sort of right on track where we, you know, were last year. So everything's looking pretty good this early in, in the budget year. Any questions on the budget comparison? Okay. All right. Next on the agenda is, we're going to talk about our audit report. With us tonight, we have Carl Hogan. Carl, you want to come up and grab a seat and a microphone? Due to the early schedule that we had this year, as far as the meetings go, and especially the meeting next week, and Carl's workload, because a couple of auditors opted to not do the work this year, and that left several school districts alert. Carl's been overextended, and he is putting, the audit is complete, we're just waiting for it to be put into the audit report. So here to explain the process and where we're at is Carl Hogan, our CPA from BBD.
Yeah, we're looking to hire people if anybody's interested, you know.
I know a 21-year-old who's a finance and accounting major at a local university who's potentially looking for work.
Yeah. That would be great. It is like tough, because nobody wants to be an accountant. It's not a sexy job, you know? There are people who want to be lawyers, you know, and everything like that. But that being said, like Dave said, we finished the audit, and I think the game plan is right now to meet with, give everybody the opportunity with the full document next Monday, right? 8:30 in the morning, to kind of go over the whole document. What we're doing is it's, you know, you've seen the document before, it's like 70 pages. And there's a portion in the front called Management's Discussion Analysis. So we're working with Dave and Mark on that right now to kind of wrap that up and make sure, you know, tidy that all up. And, but for the most, for everything else, like the numbers are solid, and we're just, you know, finishing the final 70-page document. So tonight, I don't know if everybody has.
No, we did not handle that.
Okay. So I just picked out some excerpts from the audit report that I was going to kind of go over here. The first thing I want to go over, obviously the most important thing, is your independent auditor's report. So when you do get a chance to get, to look at the document, the first three pages is the independent auditor's report. What you're going to notice is, it's a little bit longer than previous years. There was a new auditing standard in the current year, so they kind of changed the language in the audit report, added some, so I guess somebody needs a job to keep on changing these reports and changing them up. But what you want to take away is in the first two paragraphs, is the opinion paragraph, that the numbers that were being presented to us for the year ended June 30th, 2022, were fairly presented. When you get into the numbers in the audit report, and you look at the budget, the actual stuff, you're going to see that they're going to line up directly with what's being reported throughout the year, going to line up with Dave's year-end report, and, you know, how things shook out for, or June 30th, 2022. Just a little synopsis in terms of, you know, how you ended up the year for the general fund as of June 30th, 2022. What you're going to see is the revenues, the good year that you had related to the general fund is all driven by revenues. School districts across the state, it was kind of twofold. I think when everybody put their budget together for 2021, 2022, everybody was a little bit conservative still, because there was a lot of unknowns with COVID, and whether there'd eventually be a, I mean, we didn't see in, you know, the 20-year, an impact related to COVID. But I think there was a little bit more of an anticipation that things would be a little bit more normal going into 2021, 2022. But, and the budget was put together based upon assumptions, and, you know, things didn't go as we all planned. But what you're going to see is that the increase that you have in your fund balance, or, you know, the good results of operations are being driven by the revenue section. And when you look at the revenue section, your local revenues, which are driven by the taxes, were almost $8 million more than anticipated. And this is because of two areas that you had a budget conservatively, because you didn't know how things were going to be, the earned income taxes, and the realty transfer taxes. And I just think across the board, you know, especially in this area, southeastern Pennsylvania, the realty transfer taxes was really a big, huge increase over what was actually budgeted, because I don't think anybody would have ever anticipated in 2000, especially in 2021, beginning part of, end of 2021, most of 2021 would come in like that, and earned income taxes came in much better than anticipated across the board, just not in Colonial School District. And then you'll also see, your federal source revenues came in more than anticipated due to the additional funding that you received from, through the state. Your state source revenue came in more than anticipated. If you remember, the state budget came in a little bit later. Everybody got a little bit additional basic ed subsidy, special ed subsidy for 2021, 2022. So at the end of the day, your actual revenues were $8.5 million more than budget. When we get down to your expenditures, it's actually uncanny. There's always ups, and there's always downs. Some departments are over, some departments are below. But at the end of the day, your expenditures, when you're talking about $140 million, were only $6, $6,000 less than budget. So, you know, that, that's happened very often, you know, they come in, you know, like almost right on. But those are the things you can control. You can't control revenues and the collections, but, you know, most, for the most part, your expenditures, those are the things to control. But things, but when you look at it, some of the categories are up, some of the categories are down, but at the end of the day, it broke out to $6,000 more than budget. And then there's another section called Other Financing Sources Uses. So because of the good year you had on the revenue side, the board made a motion to move $9 million over to the Capital Reserve and Capital Projects Fund, $8 million to replenish the Capital Reserve Fund, and then $1,000 over to the Capital Projects Fund to help out with the ongoing Colonial Middle School project at, at the end of the year. So at the beginning of the year, when you went through the budget process, you budgeted to use $3.1 million of fund balance. You actually used 3.5 because of the fact that you had the good year in revenue, but then you transferred some of the money over to the Capital Reserve, Capital Projects Fund. So you actually worked out at the end of the day, because that revenue, that one-time revenue, that, you know, won't always be there. You used it for one-time expenditures in the case of capital. Beginning of your fund balance at the beginning of the year was $39.4 million. You reduce it by the 3.5 million, and then you're down to 35.9 at the end of the year, as of June 30th, 2022, kind of in line with what you, you know, anticipated during the budget process. You got there a little bit different, but you did need to replenish that Capital Reserve, and you did need money over from the Capital Projects Fund. Any questions, concerns in the general fund? Like I said, should be, you know, familiar with what's being said on a monthly basis. Also, when you get in the audit report, the other fund that we spend a lot of time on is the Capital Projects Fund. We spend a lot of time within the Capital Projects Fund, in particular, related to the issuance of the new debt during the current year for current projects, and then also the Colonial Middle School project and auditing anything related, financial related to that. At the end of the year, Capital Projects Fund had $15.8 million in it, of which $8.2 million is in the Capital Reserve Fund, which is the transfer over that we just talked about, and then $7.6 million, which is the leftover from the, the bonds, which is primarily that most recent issue that you did, the general obligation bonds of 2022, still left over to be, that would have been, will be spent in 2022, 2023. One last item. So to be in compliance with PDE regulations, you have to assign, commit fund balance at year end, and there's various categories here and there. Everybody should look at, and we'll kind of, if you come on, you know, Monday, to go through all 70 pages in detail. I don't think we'll get that far. But we'll kind of go over those and see what you've put aside for one-time non-recurring expenditures to get in accordance with PDE. And the last thing I think that should be highlighted in the finance committee meeting is the, you know, the results of the audit, other than you have a clean audit opinion that the numbers presented to us by management were fairly presented. We do a lot of testing. We test your internal controls and, you know, make a determination whether there were what we call significant deficiencies and material weaknesses in the internal controls of the school district, and we did not identify anything related to, that we would consider significant deficiency or material weakness to be reported to the board. Also, we have to do a audit of your federal awards, and, you know, compliance with what we call the single audit. And during the current year, as you would expect, we have to pick a, what we call a major program. And during the current year, the major program was obviously the, the ESTR funds, that ESTR I, II, and III monies that were spent, and we didn't have any issues related to that. Also, I don't think it's happened here yet, but the state is, you know, making its rounds, and also auditing the ESTR funds, so they're actually using a third-party CPA firm to come out and monitor the ESTR fund. So they'll be on top of that as well. I don't know if they've reached out to you, but they've been doing some of the bigger school districts at this point in time. We'll eventually get here.
Any questions on the audit? If they come up over the weekend, we hope to see you all at 8:30 on Monday morning. We'll put an extra pot of coffee on for you, because we know you're going to need it.
Dave, do, is there a requirement that certain number of board members be there?
No, this is really just informational. It allows for questions. There will be no deliberations.
This isn't the one where somebody has to show up?
No, no. I don't think we had anybody last year, but that was, you know, COVID-related. But, but then.
Not that I'm not like jumping at the idea of being there at 8:30 in the morning to listen to this, but I'm just asking.
We expect a clean audit.
Oh, yeah. It's, I mean, the numbers are already done. Like I said, we're just finalizing them, you know, 60, 70 pages to get done. And, you know, I, I like the opportunity to sit down like in a smaller, you know, just to be able to facilitate conversation and allow, because, you know, when you're in a meeting setting like this, you don't necessarily, you know, you have things and you have an agenda to get done.
Right. And because the audit and the AFR are due by the end of this month, we do need it approved on the 17th, so we can submit our AFR to the, to the state and be compliant with their timeline.
Then the internal control section, that's the sections where we're looking for fraud and waste, and I, that, are those policies publicly available that we can present, maybe at a future finance meeting, where we can show the public that we're protecting their money?
Sure.
Now, we do, I mean, just to go back to the internal controls, I mean, we don't give an opinion on your internal controls, that, you know, we just test them, and we could, you know, tell you that they, based upon our testing, because we can't test every transaction, that, you know, what we've tested, they're operating effectively. So we test them over payroll, cash disbursements, real estate taxes, all that stuff. So we'll pick a sample, and, you know, as we get, and our samples vary, just depending on based upon the risk of that in particular year. So when it comes to the single audit, our sampling was a little higher because of the ESTR funds, and, you know, the, the federal government has notified us that they're of a higher risk. So we have to, you know, base our sampling based upon stuff like that.
Okay. Thank you very much, Carl. We'll see you Monday.
Yep.
Next on the agenda, we received the pro forma budget for the fall drama for the PW, the Colonial Players. They are going to be performing the, the play that went wrong, not this weekend, but next weekend. So here is the budget that they have put together. This is half of the spreadsheet. There's another half that shows actual, that we're going to ask that the club fill out after the production's over, just to make sure that they're compliant. By, by reviewing this and approving it, number one, we give a little bit of shout-out to the Colonial Players and the musical in the spring, to try to get more people out. It's always good to get the word out that, that we're putting the show on. But also, this middle section here that shows the personnel required to work with, with the students, they do get compensated for that. And by approving this budget, which will be on the agenda next week, it authorizes us that after the show's done, we will pay these people what is on the budget. Any questions?
At some point, we were going to have a conversation. Is that going to happen at Community Relations? Okay. Never mind.
Okay. All right. Any questions on the, on the fall production budget? All right. The next item we have concerns the, the budget we're currently working on, the 2324. We're in budget development. The budget documents are due back into the business office this Friday. But we wanted to have an action recommended tonight by administration that the Colonial School District for 2324 opt out of the Act I timeline. What that means is, once we opt out, we don't have to comply with having a preliminary budget done by February, just to prove we're going to be under the Act I index. By opting out of the, adopting this resolution, we are certifying to the state that we will not raise taxes above the Act I index, which is 4.1% for the 2324 year. This allows us more time to put solid numbers together, instead of voting on a guesstimate, or a, you know, something that would just throw together just to show in, in January and February. And then what we'll do is, then we'll approve in the April timeframe, the final proposed budget. That has to sit for at least 30 days before the final budget gets adopted. And there are changes that can be made right up to the last minute, the final budget, and that's when the tax rates are set. But we will be sending in the resolution and certifying to the state, once this is passed, that we are opting out, and that we will not raise taxes above the 4.1%. Any questions on that? Thank you. And the last one is a, is a new law that was adopted just this year with the budget. We received notice from our tax collectors, Dominic Cochia and Elite Revenue Solutions, that this was passed, and that it has to be adopted by January. So again, January, I think it was 8th or 9th, it has to be adopted. Because we don't have a meeting yet until after that, we have to get this adopted now. This law was adopted by the, the state to protect new homeowners. What it says is that, under Act 57, that if you are a new homeowner, and you did not get your municipal or school tax bill, and you end up finding out that you get a delinquency, and now you're a 10% penalty, and, and you're at interest, there is a way that you can get that waived. There are certain criteria that you have to meet. You have to, you know, verify that you just bought your house within the last year, since the, the, the tax bill was approved, and that you did not get it. And then if you meet those criteria, by every municipality and school district approving this resolution, it will then authorize our then authorize our tax collectors to, uh, waive the 10% penalty and also waive any interest and penalty that would have been tacked on if it, say, would get to the Montgomery County Tax Claim Bureau after, uh, after, uh, January 1st. So this is, uh, adopted by the state to protect new homeowners that may not be aware that tax bills come with homeownership. Uh, so we are asking that, uh, the board entertain this and approve this at the next meeting.
Dave, I'm sorry, just so I'm clear, what, because what are we approving if this is the law?
It's, well, it's,
I'm making sure what I'm going to react to approving.
Uh, every, I mean, every taxing authority must adopt the resolution, adopting the law.
Got it. Okay.
Which authorizes then our elected or appointed tax collector to waive, uh, the fees and the penalties if, uh, all the criteria are met by the new homeowner.
Got it. Thank you.
Okay. All right.
Basically a protection for the new homeowners.
That's correct. So, uh, we are asking that these, these four items, the audit, the, uh, fall production, the, uh, opt-out of Act One and the Act 57 resolution, uh, be recommended by the finance committee to appear on the November 17th agenda. All right. Thank you. And that ends our agenda.
All right. Any, any other questions about the agenda? Any public comment? So, all right. That's it. We will adjourn.